Good evening, everybody. It's 6:00 PM. I would like to call to order our work session of May 12th, 2020. We have two items that we'll be reviewing today, and we will be starting with Communications and Community Manager, Neil Ruland, who will be presenting our COVID-19 Community Impact Survey, and then we will be followed by Lisa Sorenson, who will give us a brief update on our City Council and Staff Planning Retreat. So I will kick it off to City Manager Rodriguez to open it up for our first work session. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this really is Communications and Community Engagement Manager Neil Ruland's baby. He really did such great work on it, and so I'm just going to turn it right over to him. Can you hear us, Neil?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, good. Well, hopefully, that's the only technical difficulties we have this evening. So everyone knows who I am. Good to see everybody again. So what my plan is, I'm going to go through the survey results, and I still have probably a couple more hours of work that I need to do on it. But what you guys will be able to do is, if you've ever used the program Tableau, it's a great program for creating dashboards, and I've almost finished a dashboard for this. So that for any, like to delve into the data, look like how the questions may link up with certain demographic groups or anything like that, you'll be able to do that. It's a great program. It really will make it easy on everybody. It doesn't cost anything for you guys to download it. You can slice and dice the data every, any way you'd like, and I'll give you a brief, like very, very brief tutorial on how to, how it all looks and stuff when it's in there. Do anything you'd like with it. So, and you can always feel free to reach out to me to ask any questions you may have about it. I am going to start off by sharing my screen. I need to find... There it is, my PowerPoint. And yep, you can all see it, correct? All right. So just starting out, the background behind the survey, we wanted to know, we were very good about getting resources out there to residents about specifically housing, food, utility, health, and a lot of other things as well. But we really wanted to provide a much more surgical approach when it comes to the information that we provided to residents. So we saw several other communities, not just Minnesota, the metro area, but up country and other organizations, putting together surveys and figuring out, you know, kind of what their community is looking for. And that's why we put together survey. So we did want a cookie cutter survey. We could easily take in one of the better surveys that were out there for used to model off after Brooklyn Park did a very good job on theirs. There was much more open-ended, where it was almost like a survey before you did another survey. Same type of thing. There were other companies that were out there that could use. So what I ended up doing is, I ended up finding and reviewing 26 similar community surveys from cities, counties, states, and other organizations. They thought were probably the best that we could use to help to do, to review the survey that could help us figure out what residents are interested in. Was a survey done at the University of South Dakota, Brooklyn Park did a good one, as I said, Florida Department of Health, and the I have to definitely thank Blanca Martinez-Gavina, who helped us put it into Spanish. So we were able to get the, a mirror survey out there in both Spanish, that as many of our residents could fill it out as possible with the X. We also tried to create a survey that was quick. We didn't want it to take a long period of time, because a lot of your survey tends to be, the more people are disinterested in taking. So we were able to window it down to 14 questions to kind of really get at what we were looking for. And based on all the metrics that we had, it only took about three minutes to complete. We really were able to get qualitative data. We didn't want to open it up. I definitely understand a time and a place. Quantitative data, where we have open-ended questions and people kind of give us everything that's on their minds. But for providing us a base level of what we're looking for, we wanted to really kind of have that information and be able to use it quickly, and also have a strong demographic. So when it came to survey dissemination, we used obviously our main mailing list on our website, which I think is about 8,000 people. Thankfully, I was able to reach out and work with the City Council, and I know you guys leverage your social networks as well, and put it on your social media, but also, you know, sent some emails. I know, put it different places as well, which helped me out. We also leveraged our commission members. We were, I worked with the liaisons, and we had emails out to them and encouraged them to post an email and take it themselves, you know, disseminate in any way to, they thought that they, so they felt fit. Social media, we used a lot of social media for it, not just our channels, but the schools, the Chamber, and the Foundation were very good about it. Also, we worked with two very strong Latinx organizations in our community that were able to help get the word out as well, with La Red Latina and Mira. In the end, with, you know, not a huge outlay of, outside of the work that I and some of my team did, we got 736 responses in under a week. So that's good. We still have a few to trickle in here and there, but the 736 was what I used to put everything together. We hit it very hard for that first week, and then after that, we, you know, kind of put everything together and started doing our analysis. For down, some women took the survey than men, with a breakdown of 25 to 75, with a couple folks that did not, that identified in a different way. What I was really, of all the demographic, this kind of spread out age. You know, 18 to 24 is a rough demographic to get surveys taken across the board, and are usually our clientele, especially when it comes to people that pay property taxes or the acts or services, are usually a little bit older than 24. So I was really encouraged that we usually age demographics, especially when it comes to surveys, skews a little bit older in the 45 and up specifically, unless you're talking about like BuzzFeed. So I was really encouraged by the pretty good spread when it comes to effects. We also asked, you know, because COVID-19, when it comes to vulnerable populations, it's really pre-existing medical condition, but also for our seniors as well. So we dug into how many seniors were present living in the home. All over two-thirds of them didn't have any seniors, but we did have a third of them that did have seniors living in the home. Most of them are just one or two seniors. We didn't ask, you know, if they were married or anything like that. We did have a few responses as well that did have more than even two seniors living. So we did that. We're able to cross-check a lot of our senior data with the questions that also, you know, with schools being shut down and learning going to home, you know, there's, there's questions of youth being in the home and different, different ways that it may be affecting parents in this regard. Forty percent of the respondents did have youth in the home. Most of them, as you can see, just one or two kids, but there were several, several homes that had three or more children present. Majority of, I wish our racial demographic did break out a little bit, did reflect a little bit more of our diverse community. But I still feel pretty good that we did have, you know, a 700-plus responses. You know, getting, we did get a decent amount of people of color that did respond to the survey. Total, 6% of all respondents were from our Latinx Hispanic or Spanish population. But 3% of the respondents overall were Asian background, 3% were African Americans, 1% of another race, and 1% of American. Same type of thing about 30, but about a third of all of rich. So I did wish that we get a few more renters that try to work with our housing communities, with our housing managers, try to get these out there a little bit better. We did get 13% people that were identify as renters, and 86% So now, this is what you really wanted to get into when it comes to the question. The first thing that we asked residents were, are you social distancing, and how much of the time are 13% of them said they were social all time. That was, you know, the second largest group, but most people were trying to social distance most of the time. Where, to a lesser extent, 12%, some of the time, and 1% of people, or about 7.8 people that responded to the survey, said they were not social distancing. As I'm sure you could imagine, with seniors falling into our, one of the vulnerable populations, they are taking social distancing recommendations and practicing it most effectively. 91% of them, so you know, definitely within the margin of error of about everybody in our senior population, 65 and up, are practicing social distancing either all or most of the time. And from what I recall, and I could pull it up for you, that, that all the time was, I think, something around 30%. So it's We also asked of what really is, you know, stressing you out when it comes to COVID-19. And I said, you'll see this throughout, you know, across demographics, across age, really getting cleaning supplies, whether it's hand sanitizer, whether it's also some other amenities like toilet paper. That's really, you know, that's really on people's minds. To a lesser extent, reduce wages. People, 30%, 7% of people that responded said that that's very or somewhat stressful for them. Getting food was also on par with that, where about a third of them thought that it was very or somewhat stressful as well. And then school closures also impacted. When it came to accessibility of reduced wages and hours at a much higher than any other group, a specifically of our Latinx respondent, respondents said that 70% of them were at least very or somewhat stressed out by the potential of lost wages. When it comes, we also asked about applying for assistance, whether individuals thought that they would be need to apply for assistance at some, at some point, based on what they were hearing and seeing. And overall, most respondents, if you look on the left side, not about, three-fourths of them didn't think that they would need to apply for any assistance. But 17% of them, and they were allowed to select, you know, from the gamut as many that they thought applied. But 17% of our residents that took the survey thought that the one type of assistance they would need would potentially be unemployment benefits. And 8% of people did already have benefits that were already in use. The largest group that came up to saying that they would need to apply for some level of assistance, that I thought was most interesting, would be, once again, our Latinx community. You know, they, they did differ, where they thought about 50% of them didn't think that they would need to apply for any type of assistance. But where it did differ is rent and mortgage percentage wasn't very high across the board when it can reach all 736 respondents into it. But when you broke out the Latinx community or Latinx respondents particularly, rent and mortgage was very high for them and did fall in at 17%. And unemployment, which does mirror all respondents in general, but also came at a something to keep in mind. When we asked people their top concerns about their second biggest concern that people replied to were the effects that it would have on their investments or stock portfolio. And then the third would be not being able to work because we were able to break this down. These were some, also some interesting things that we were able to pull out there, both with people of color and seniors. Getting sick, you know, fell number one for both these groups. But when it comes to people of color, they actually thought that people that identified as people of color accessing medical care, which, when it came to all respondents, that did fall pretty, a little bit farther down the list. And also paying rent or mortgage was one of their top concerns as well. When it came for our seniors, it was getting sick, as I said, and then stocks and investments was their second. They also were very concerned about accessing medical. Those were the top three for each group. You know, it's hard networking communications, and I've worked in communications my entire career. You see more and more different sources, people get information. And some of those sources aren't always the most, what do I say, like, honest isn't the word I would use, but I would say that they're, they're probably not the best sources to you, or objective sources of information. The thing that I thought was probably, that was really encouraging for me is that when people are looking for information about COVID-19, we had them rank, we gave them a whole list of things, from their friends and family down to doctors and different things like that. And we had them list their top three information sources, and 80% of them are looking to government. I think this is really, really good. Obviously, when it comes to public health stuff, we're mirroring a lot of what Minnesota Department of Health, the CDC, and looking to public health. They're looking to government, which I thought was really, really encouraging. I was really concerned when we first put it out there that we were going to get like 97% social media and then it's going to dry. They also, they returned to the news media, and I know that you can look at that different ways, depending on which news media sources you're going to. That could be, I still think that, you know, going to rank them, and these are the top two. I feel a lot better about them than some of the potential other answers they early supplies is just one things, like if, you know, if it was you know, up to me, and we, you know, we give everybody some hand sanitizer and some toilet paper and some wet wipes, and I think that that would go a long way in assuaging some of their concerns. But as I said, cleaning supplies are really on people's minds. Anecdotally as well, if you, you know, watch the community page or anything like that, you'll see people asking to this day, as they were in March, about said toilet paper, wet wipes, hand sanitizer. I'm seeing more of them pop up in stores, so hopefully, you know, as the supply chain keeps getting ramped up, it will give a little bit easier, easier feel that. But that is the number one across the board, any demographic, every age, whether you have kids, no kids, cleaning supplies are on people's minds when it comes to obtaining basically. When it comes to all respondents, they also did say that, you know, obtaining, you know, a mental and emotional support, 22%. And then this did change a little bit for our respondents' color. Food jumped up to be the number two concern, the number two concern at 30%. Mental health at 29, and then helping with schoolwork. They were concerned, individuals that were, that identified as people of color, were, did express concerns about being able to help their children. They wanted everyone to, you know, be following social distancing, to be following the lines down by the governor, by the Minnesota Department of Health, other public health. But the other thing too is positivity and calmness. And in terms of communications and sources we've been providing out there, throughout this, our goal, one of our big goals has been to provide a level of positivity and calmness when it comes to providing resources. I think that at least in regards to communications, we've really been doing a very good job at trying to hit the tone when it comes to that. And a big chunk of people did feel pretty, you know, good right now, that they felt safe. They felt that they had kind of what they needed. And then medical care as well, with some of the places being, you know, down, like injuries, and people just being, you'll see their doctor, doctors, chiropractors. This was a question that we went back and forth about, about mental health. We hear a lot about mental health in regards to Minnesota's stay-at-home order. What's affecting, there's, I watch the news almost any night on TV. You know, I was, I wasn't sure how, I was expecting, you know, a tidal wave of people to say that, you know, it's, that it really is affecting their mouths. I thought the numbers were going to be a little bit higher. As I said, some people strongly, you know, people overall said they strongly agreed that it was impacting their mental health. 36% that somewhat agree with that statement. And then the other half of folks to some degree, either didn't disagree or disagree or disagreed with the statement in general. The other thing that we thought that we really wanted to deep dive into was, you know, with a lot of our senior communities being kind of shut down to family members and things of that nature, we were kind of figuring out how seniors were feeling about this. Seniors, when they were talking about, you know, especially with, as I said, senior not allowing access to family members and stuff like that. I thought that within our senior communities, that they would be struggling a little bit more with their mental health. This was just based on, you know, supposed to think that I've read and seen. And then we pulled the senior data specifically out. We really didn't find that it released, and mind you, that we did this survey a couple weeks ago, so that it may have changed a little bit since then. But, you know, it wasn't as strong. I was expecting these numbers to be stronger, but they seem to be doing a little bit better in terms of mental health and any other age group. So that was, that was kind of interesting. So I also broke out some major takeaways. That was, we went through pretty much the entire survey. But these are my play with the data and stuff, probably by the end of the week. I can always be wrong on these types of things. But people are, you know, I said, I think that there's some positivity here. Residents want positivity, and they want people to be following the rules. People are following them, which is good, but I know that specifically with our seniors and almost every other group, they really want people to adhere to that social distancing, to be, you know, the governor says, you know, wear face masks. I think they want people wearing face masks. It's, if they want people to do, be respectful of each other and do the things that they need for them to feel safe and for other students. Also, when it comes to needs, we did a lot of this, as I said, to figure out like, you know, if certain groups need this, that, or the other thing, you know, whether it's housing resources, food insecurity resources, things of that nature. But really, when it comes to necessities right now, what people are wanting, this really comes down to much more of the everyday basic necessities when it comes to the overarching respondents of the survey. They're really, you know, cleaning supplies and some basic necessities like are on people's minds a little bit more than some of the stuff. But the job security stuff is, and some of the housing stuff is being in there with some groups. It's something to pay attention to, and it's something when, as I was saying, we're putting communications and community outreach stuff together, it's looking at those groups that need very specific things and working with our partner organizations, also with our, you know, department complexes or faith communities, and getting those resources, those very specific groups that need those specific resources, as opposed to just throwing it out there, throwing it out there, really trying to connect those resources in the most micro level as opposed to a macro level. And people are turning to the city and other government resources for accurate information, which I think is very good. I just can't say that I think we've got to keep providing resources, providing information as it becomes available, because people are looking to us and other government entities, but like looking for us for answers. And us to provide accurate and solid information is exactly what in terms of respondents of color, with the exception of unemployment benefits, people of color exceed, expect needing access to programs at a much higher rate than their Asian counterparts. So, you know, we're going to need to reach out to our, you know, communities of color. And even, as I said, if we can break them down more into like our Latinx community, our Asian communities, and our African-American communities, and make sure that we are getting them the information that they need. Their biggest concern though, as I said, is they're concerned about their lost, lost hours and wages. Specifically, it said it's the highest in our Latinx community. So we need to, I think we're going to, I'm going to double down our efforts when it comes to unemployment benefits, things of that nature, just making sure that people have the right information and resources they need. But also that paying rent and mortgage, especially with the governor's potential moratorium on evictions coming up here. Making sure that they have the information as possible and working, as I said, whether it's with development to make sure that we have resources out there seniors, as I said, they're, they're very mentally strong, at least according to the survey, that information that we got. I was thinking it was going to go the different way, but they seem to be, but they want their, their biggest concern though, too, one of the biggest concerns outside of the cleaning supplies and basic necessities, is healthcare access. It's really come up for them. Same time, they're not, they're not really anticipating needing a lot of access to programs, like we were talking about. Most of them are are, you expect to need, need access to that. They are the ones that really, really, they're, they're very good at, at least self-reporting wise, adhering to social distancing, and they're really wanting others to do the same. So that's really what's important to them. Parents, but really, school, school, schools, when it comes to them, they're, they're worried about, you know, providing those, the education that their kids need. And one of the things too that came up there, when you talk about, when I was trying to dig through the mental health aspect of this, and when it's affecting people's mental health the most, parent, school-aged children, it was a lot higher than any other group when it talked about the stay-at-home order affecting their health, affecting their mental health negatively. So, as I said, I'm going to have to see what we can do from the city side of what type of resources we can provide to them a little bit more, and also working conversations a week with our schools, both with high school, like the Angels, and with and with RHS to trying to figure out how we can work together to provide resources. So we're going to have to knock our heads together. They're also going, they've also done some, they're going to get the access to And then my last big takeaway when it comes to renters, food accessibility for them, a lot higher than any other group, any other demographic, whether you break it down racially, age, kid, the whole thing. Renters, you know, the food accessibility was a lot higher with this group. I know it's probably not surprising, but also paying rent is an ever-present concern. Didn't really jump up super high. It was always present, but it was never quite as high. I was expecting that one to be in the 30, 40, 50% as something that may stress them out or things that they might access to assistance on, but it was, but it is, through the survey, it was an ever-present concern. And then, you know, to a lesser extent, but also, you know, work and job hours ranked high as well. I got done it in like 27 minutes. I thought I was injured a little bit quicker. Guys, real quick, I'm changes to it, and you'll be able to slice and dice the data any way that you see fit. So, right now, what's, what's popping up is Tableau. So this is what you see. This isn't probably the best way to look at it, but I'll work on it. The reason I haven't, haven't emailed it to you guys yet, if you see, based on the left side here, these are responses, and I know what they all mean, but they're all my equations and my coding for putting this all together. But the cool thing is, you see on your left side, this is, you know, the first question, you know, are you self-isolating? This is actually the first question. You anticipate needing applying for any of the following programs? And this is the overall interested in saying, like, you know, sorting them based on how many, you know, how many seniors live in your home or something like that. You can do that. Usually, you're like, how many kids, or based on, based on race, you can do that. And if I'm saying, oh, let's look at this based on individuals of color, you can look at the same question. I don't think it will change too much, but as you said, you know, are you self-isolating? The numbers all change and everything like that. I can also build this out as well, to however you would like, but you can run through. And once you make the changes, like, you know, these are all the questions, whatever, whatever, you know, people have and stuff. So I'll send that out to you guys. It's very interesting to see, and really, you could share what you want to do with anybody. Yeah, I didn't leave a lot of time for questions. I apologize for that. But I wanted to get through and give you guys context for what we're hearing and seeing. We're going to take the the information that we got from the survey and try to put together some communication plans that will provide residents with more, with better resources for the needs that they have. So, but if in the couple of minutes that we do you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Neil. Any questions or comments?
I had one.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, um, this is Councilmember Supple. Um, you had talked about people wanting to access medical care. And I was reminded of the governor's briefing comments that they wanted people to do preventive care and they were worried about kids not getting their vaccinations and that we could have problems with things like measles and stuff. Did you get any indication, was it preventive stuff? Or are people worried about care if they actually get COVID?
Um, I think it was, I, I think it was, I think it was more COVID related. That's a great question. We didn't really specify on it. We just kind of said more access to both medication and just medical care. We didn't really parse that up. But I would, you know, I, I hate to assume and stuff like this, but I would assume it's probably a little more closely related to COVID as opposed to something else. But I really can't, you know, that's just more of a gut feeling than anything. It's just in general that the way, the way that we looked at, interpreted the data was, I want to go to the doctor or dentist or chiropractor or whatever it is. Autometrist, can I be able to do something? That's more of a, I said, kind of putting our
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Whalen.
Um, I was just asking, given the, the data of how parents responded and working with, with parents in my day job, I know that this has been a a huge shift and it's very stressful. And I'm sure Councilmember Supple is probably even more acutely aware of that, working at a school. But I guess I'm wondering, and this is less of a specific question to the survey and more of a overall, but I'm curious what, what the conversations with the schools have looked like? How can we partner well with them? And are there, are there more ways that we can support kids and families through this time?
Yeah, um, I think that that's the, the question, the kind of the conversation, at least for me, like most of my conversations with them deal with communications and kind of some community engagement regard stuff. A lot of, honestly, a lot of the stuff they've been asking me. Any way we can, once they figure out what they want to do for graduation or we've also had conversations about providing access to food and getting that information out there a little bit. But it's, it's really been more kind of case by case, not as much of a larger conversation, but they know their communication person knows, and we've been throughout this, when they need to get information out, they know they have full access to everything that I have, whether I'm putting it, I, I will put it directly on our website, like we're every, all of our partner organizations, especially our big ones with the chamber, the schools, the foundation. They know that anything that I can do, you know, obviously, within reason, we will do it. And it's not really, you don't, I don't ask a lot of questions. If it's something that's gonna help people through this time, we make it happen. And they've been, and they've also been equally, especially when it comes to, I know this wasn't part of the survey, but when it comes to the small business loan program, all of them jumped at the opportunity promoted, even especially the schools who that's about as far out of their purview as possible. They know that they have family members, they have parents that are small business owners in the city of Richfield, and they're, they're very open to helping. And I think the biggest thing I can take away about, you know, the partnerships that we have right now is that everyone kind of has this mentality of that we're all in this together and we're only gonna get through this semi-smoothly. I guess there's no smooth way of getting through COVID-19, but the smoothest way that we'll get through this is if we all work together. And that's kind of the mindset that I think everyone's in.
Thank you. We're a little bit over time, so I just want to check any last comments from council members on this item. Councilmember Chapman.
I just want to say a huge thank you to everybody, but especially Neil for, for giving us this, this depth of insight. Thank you very much.
Yep, no problem. And as I said, I know that, sorry, I tried to go as fast as possible, but if you guys have any questions or anything like that, you can always reach out to me. I know all, everyone has, you know, my cell phone, my desk phone, my email address, all that kind of stuff. You can always reach out to me with specific questions if you want me to drill down on anything. And as I said, I will give you guys, I'll give you guys instructions and access to all the data that you can parse it any way you like.
Thank you. Before I wrap up, I just also want to echo my sincerest of gratitude to you, Neil. You have been doing exceptional work. Our residents are so lucky to have you, our city staff and, and all of us are very fortunate to have you in your role in communications. I, that's one of the things I hear so much from residents is how impressed they are by our communications. And that is, that is you. So thank you for your, for your work before this, but also during COVID and then for putting this survey together and really making sure that we're all working collectively to address those most pressing needs of our, of our families. So thank you for your leadership, Neil. Thank you for everything you do. We are greatly appreciative and very fortunate.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I gotta, I precious said early on, we have one, we have one staff member that has gone above and beyond throughout this when it comes to helping us with the communications. I think a lot of you know her through her work in housing. Her name's Katie. She's on a job share where she works about fifty percent of her time down there usually in community development, fifty percent of her time up here. So if you guys know Kate, this is a plug for her. Like she has been lockstep with me when it comes to helping with stuff. Like if you guys have received your resource letter in the mail that was in both English and Spanish, I cannot give her credit for the Spanish. That's all Blanca. But she, that was her project straight through. I gave it, I honestly was bogged down with about eighty other things. And if you want to look, see what, you know, hitting something out of the park is, and that's the type of work product she does every day. So if you guys know Kate, reach out to her, call her, text her, send her email. She's literally, in my opinion, the MVP of the city right now, at least it comes to communications and engagement, because she is just going above and beyond and learning new skills and doing so many great things. But that's, I appreciate all the words you guys said to me, but it's, it would not be half as good if I didn't have Kate and several other people that are in different departments, like Brad Draino over in police, Katie helps out a lot, Pam helps out a lot, Blanca helps out so, so much. Kelly Nguyen, if you guys like the birthday patrols, you know, I may have set them up, but she's the one that coordinates all of them. So there's, everyone's really band together on the city side of stuff. It's really, you're seeing a lot of silos broken down and stuff, and it's really, really incredible. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate it and keep up the good work.
Thank you for sharing that, Neil. All right. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Yep. Sorry, Lisa, you can take nine minutes of my day tomorrow if you want. So you can call me and apologize. A good night, everybody.
And the next, by, the next item is a discussion about the city council retreat with Lisa Sorenson. I am guessing, correct, city manager Rodriguez, I can just pass it directly to Lisa? All right.
All right. Hello to all of you. Thanks for giving me some of your precious time. And I just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to talk about the upcoming planning session that I will be facilitating with both staff and council. It is a short session, two and a half hours. We're hoping to, Katie may talk to you, we're hoping to actually break it out into two with some time in between sessions for you to think about the discussion, questions, responses, et cetera. But I'll talk about that as we go. I talked with some of the staff this morning. I've talked with the mayor and the city manager a little bit about some of the big pieces that are, are kind of desired outcomes. And putting something together like this, what I'm really hoping it to be is a chance for council and staff to get together and talk. Share information, share strengths, share challenges, share roadblocks, share frustrations, share wins, if you will, and to really give each, all of you a chance to really ask some deep questions to get feedback from all the directors and all council as far as what's important, what's going on. And with that information, kind of in session one, to come back two weeks later and really talk about and determine what are the city of Richfield's priorities and goals for the next six to twelve months? And then looking at budget issues with those. And so kind of breaking it down into two pieces, we were thinking about putting it all into one, but really if people are gonna really be able to set some priorities and be all on the same page, there probably first needs a time where people just need to get together and talk. As either Neo or you said, Mayor, this leadership team is under unprecedented challenges where there is no right way, there is no set way to get through this. But with all of you working as, on the same team, addressing the immediate or pressing needs of Richfield, we're more likely to come out, out of the next six to twelve months with more positive outcomes or more progress towards positive outcomes than a bunch of wasted efforts or frustration. And so my real goal and hopes for this is to lead the group through a chance to talk about the written feedback. All of you are being asked to do the written questionnaires. What I'm doing is putting that information together, both from staff and council. If you haven't done it, please do so in the next day or two. And then I'll send that out to all of you prior to the meeting, so that you'll get a chance to see each other's as well as staff's responses to those questions. What are their priorities? What are they happy with? What are they struggling with? And then, once we get together, everyone will have had a chance to have some of that basic information so that more of a discussion can happen and more questions can happen from each other. And a chance where we don't have to decide anything or we don't have to worry about our response. We can just really ask questions to hear, to learn, to get on the same page. I think that in doing some of that and then sending, setting some of the expectations for, are we going to set how many priorities? What is the length of these priorities? When do we get together and talk about more long-term strategy and kind of understanding more of the budget repercussions and the resource repercussions that this pandemic is bringing? And so I feel like I'm rambling here, my apologies. But kind of as an agenda, my hope was to talk about a quick review of the last strategic goal session for me to talk a little bit about human capacity during change. And all research talks about that people's hundred percent right now is, or what was their hundred percent. Now they're at forty to sixty percent, and that is their hundred percent, because change takes energy, crisis takes energy. And not only the staff, but the council have their own issues that they're going through as human beings on this planet from residents, from being on the council and having expectations set upon you or your own expectations. And so just to talk for about ten minutes about what is normal in these unprecedented times and to give each other a break. Then to talk to everyone or have everyone take about two to three minutes and talk about how are they doing as human beings trying to get through this? What are they happy about? Some of the maybe struggles that you're going through. Then to move to about five minutes each on hearing from everyone about the written responses and what really resonated, what concerned you, what were you happy to see in some of those responses? Then to open it up for a discussion for about twenty-five minutes where people can really ask questions, raise issues, raise concerns, give praise, do whatever you need to do. To end it there, all those notes will be compiled. And then what I'll do is send all those notes out with one or two more questions before the next session. Based on everything, what are your three to six priorities and what do you think the city's priorities or even the department's priority should be for the next three to six to nine months? And then looking at the budget or the repercussions for budget and how the city is gonna handle that to start that conversation. So that's kind of in a two-part series, what I'd like to do for everyone, rather than just try and mush it all into one and try and have a really rushed discussion. I think that with the seriousness of what the city is up faced against and the staff is trying to do and the council is trying to do to break it out a little bit more, so that people can just have time to breathe and talk with each other and ask questions and get some responses versus trying to push it to come up with three to six major priorities for the city or for each department. Any, any thoughts or reactions to my draft agenda for the next session?
I was just looking to see if anyone was raising their hand. I, I would just like to say that I really appreciate the, this format and I appreciate intentionality you're taking and kind of thinking about what we are all facing and how are you, how can we be conscious of that? And also, how could we use this as an opportunity to keep building our team and also maybe, you know, it, things have been stressful for everybody, our staff, our council, our community, and it's going to unfortunately continue. So I, I just think that approach you're taking is right on and I appreciate that. I think it will serve us in, in the long term. And we, I have seen, you know, groups and I've talked to other mayors who, who, these are, this is an opportunity to really grow stronger as a community and as a staff and as a team, or it is unfortunately, something that can really break us apart. And I'm just really happy to see that Richfield's just been stepping up over and over again consistently. And this is just another example. And, and I'm grateful that we have you as a resource. And I think that's a great approach.
Councilmember Supple?
But Neil, I think it's good to take time and give people time to reflect, because I know everybody processes information in a different way. And I think we need to have time to be thoughtful. So I like that.
Okay. Councilmember Whalen, any feedback?
Yeah, I, I agree with what others have said. I think having some more time to process will be good. And the more I reflect, I think one of the things that I as a relatively new council member, I'm still getting used to, is that there aren't many spaces to like talk and vision and brainstorm together where we're not deciding something specific and usually needing a good half hour, forty-five minutes to understand the logistics of what we're deciding. And so I think, yeah, I think it's exactly the right move to create some space to just talk, not worry about deciding anything that first time. So I appreciate that. And also, I think what you mentioned about kind of that grounding and like what is what's normal in this and kind of how we respond and what a realistic workload is. I think that's also really helpful in kind of validating where we're at, because I've certainly been, been feeling that myself.
I asked each of you the question on your written questionnaires, scale of one to five, how are you doing energy-wise? Most people right now are at a one to two. That's average, just with everything going on in the world and/or in your homes. And knowing about how the brain works and how people work and a little bit more about the staff and getting to know the council. I think that even the council before this happened, Steve was in place for many years. Everyone kind of had their rhythm. And that changed when Katie came on, when the council has changed some of its members. And I would really like a chance, instead of us versus them building and, and all of this pressure, to really come together and say, how do we support each other? It's not how the council supports staff. It's not just staff supporting council. It's how do we come together and really support each other and focus on what we can do during this unprecedented time? Because we all have lives, we all have things that are going on, but the best teams coming out of crisis take a little time just to connect. And it's not wasted time. It's just building a little bit deeper of that rapport and understanding helps people take each other's considerations, especially when they're way different than others, coming together with more understanding, more empathy and Especially when they're way different than another's, uh, coming together with more understanding, more empathy and um. Balancing that with, okay, let's come out of this with something real, something practical and something helpful and useful for both council and staff. Would be my ultimate um, expectation of what I can help move you through with this.
Very exciting. Thank you so much. Any other um, comments, questions before we wrap up?
I had one. Did you want me to try and look for a big space to meet if we can all meet together or would council more? Um, appreciate being or doing something like this via the web technology?
Thank you, council members. Thanks. Member Chapman.
Thank you. Um, if there is any way that we could um, meet in person. That would be my strong, strong preference. Understanding that not, maybe not everybody can for, for different reasons, but to the extent that we're able. Um, have both available, but, but have that space is good.
I agree.
I guess I. If we meet in person, I would uh, feel a lot safer if it were a big space that was also outside. Um, I don't know if it's possible to like. Set up each at our own picnic table under the vets park shelter, but then we're yelling, I guess I. And I, I also am concerned, um. As, as someone who's not a high-risk population, creating an expectation that people who might be high-risk, um. If, I mean, even if you ask them like, are you okay meeting in person? Everyone else wanted to, like, that's not really a choice. So. I guess I would personally lean slightly toward doing it um. Via a web meeting. I know that significantly reduces the amount of. Sort of team and companionship sort of vibes, but I, I also don't want to put. Um. Put ourselves at risk or put anyone in a position where they're deciding between their health and. What they perceive that is the preference of the group.
Um.
Member Supple.
Um, the other thing is that if we are meeting in place, are we gonna have to have, we're gonna probably have to have face masks on. Which if we're meeting virtually, we can see people's faces and see their expressions. So it's kind of a six one-way half-dance and the other as far as the communication piece goes to it. So there's pros and cons of that.
Good points. I am comfortable uh, facilitating the session either way. Um, I could try and find a bigger room. I have a big conference room in my office, yet I do understand that. Being someone who has been in the hospital myself with this, um, it is not fun to go through and so um, I. Promote safety and comfort and at ease. So. It's fine either way. The city chooses to do that. Good points, though.
Could you also just check in with staff too and maybe we find out that they're uh, leaning in a certain way and that would also help?
Sure. My pleasure.
Mayor.
City manager Rodriguez.
We did. With the core team, um, and we're looking at it. We, we're gonna actually measure six-foot distances. One of the. Options could be to have. Some of us in Bartholomew and some of us in the chamber and be able to communicate with video, um, and we can mix it up at a break or something. Um, so we are looking at it. I had not thought about outside. Um, that's an interesting thought because it is safer to be outside. Um. But I, yeah, we'd have to figure out the sound. Um, but regardless, we would provide a video option for folks.
Thank you. Any um, final comments before we wrap up our study session and move into our council meeting? All right, well, I'd just like to say thank you so much, Lisa, for your time and support and um, it sounds like we're all really looking forward to this time together.
I'm here to customize anything I can do to make this. An effective and positive on meeting for both staff and council. And I look forward to seeing you and please, if you haven't gotten your questionnaires done, uh, maybe if you could get them done in the next couple of days. Um, that, I'm waiting for one or two staff and one or two council and then I'll get all that information. Out to you so you can have time to review it and think about it as well. I'll be in touch. Thank you all and have a great after evening. That's evening. Thank you.
Much and I will adjourn our work session and I'll see you all at our city council meeting. Thank you.